You start, I'll be sure that this thing gets covered.
I'll call this regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council to order Tuesday, March 15, 2016. Matt Mclert, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Machina?
Here.
Councilmember Marlin?
Here.
Councilmember Shulman?
Here.
Mayor's spokesman?
Here. Can I ask, Brian Marlin came in today just to give a presentation, but I figured I'd call on him to lead us in the pledge tonight. Could I ask him to do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, I don't know you, but thank you. Can you, Brian, let enough time to slide into the room, slide on in? It's Saturday, but I'll give you a second.
Hi, Kenny.
If any member of the public would like to speak tonight on anything that is not on our agenda, there's a public comment form on the back table. Now would be a good time to fill that out, and you can come up to the podium and let us know what you'd like to talk about. Anything that's not on our agenda, though, we cannot take any action or come to a consensus on anything that's discussed, but you've got us cornered, so I'd come up and do it while you have a chance. Next up, we have item number three, which would be acceptance of the agenda. And first off, do we have any urgency items tonight?
No.
Okay. Other than that, we have two small changes to the agenda, which would be, we're going to move item B with the city manager Shakespeare in the Park. We're going to move that up to the first item under council business. And we're also going to move up and give the chief a few minutes to do his miscellaneous reports early, which will have to do with introducing a couple of new trainees. With those couple of changes, do we have a motion or discussion to approve the consent agenda? Or, I'm sorry, to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next up, we have item number four, which is our consent agenda. We have ordinances waived except for title. We have item number B, approve the regular minutes of the council meetings, both February 26, 2016, and regular council meeting of March 1, 2016. We have item C, which is approve the warrant register for March 4, 2016, and we have item D for the West Shore Pool, which is adopt a resolution providing range of pay for seasonal pool classifications. Are there any members of the council that would like to pull these items for discussion? Seeing none of it, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on anything on our consent agenda? It's considered to be non-controversial, we won't discuss anything, we'll run through these and then pass them in one wave. Okay, seeing done, I'll bring that back for a possible discussion or approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Good. All right. Next up, we are at item five, which is public presentations and requests. Matt Mclert, do we have any citizen input?
No.
Okay. Item B. Next up, we have presentation to be, on the Lake County Economic Profile Report by Jim, is it, Casio?
Jim won't be here tonight, but I'll introduce our speaker from the mayor.
Of the Napa Lake Workforce Investment Board and Brian Marlin, who did our pledge and lives in our pledge of the Snow Economic Development Board. And finally?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, the Lake County Economic Profile is a product of the Regional Economic Development Committee, which we call ourselves RED, which will now be the Lake County Regional Economic Development Corporation. I'd like to introduce the author of this report, which is Brian Marlin. Brian's a graduate of Middlebury College in Vermont with a BA in International Politics and Economics. He has a background in economic development, working with the Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation in Boston, Massachusetts, and most recently as a research project coordinator with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board. And so Brian's going to give us a presentation on his product, our Regional Economic Profile. So with that, Brian.
Thanks for having me tonight. I have some copies of the report for you. So this report kind of came about because in Sonoma County, we have been doing quite a few-
My web search turns something towards a research project and project coordinator.
Why, Brian? So cute, you kind of watch.
Kind of research where you look me up. So yeah, I'm here tonight presenting on behalf of the Lake County Economic Development Committee. Ben Stone, the executive director of Sonoma County Economic Development Board, collaborated with Lake County to produce this report, so we volunteered our time to kind of get a baseline of what the situation in Lake County looks like.
Can you, I don't want to interrupt you, can you speak a little closer to microphone? That little recorder, sorry.
Sure. And so, the project starts up here. I will run through mostly the information in the presentation is similar to the report, just to give a brief overview of what we found. We're happy to work together with Lake County on this and help out our neighbor to these. So, as part of our research program, we do a lot of economic outlook and forecasts. I'll just keep this brief. Population of Lake County has remained relatively stable. It's growing about 2.2 percent and will reach projected 67,800 people in 2020. The demographics have also remained relatively stable. There's been an increase in Hispanic population and is projected to reach about 20 percent by 2020. And if you notice, the Hispanic population is noticeably younger than the overall population, accounting for 30 percent, 32 percent of the school district enrollment. And so that's accounting for a lot of the population growth, is the younger demographic of the Hispanic population in Lake County. Quick snapshot of education, currently 86 percent of residents have a high school diploma or higher, and the graduation rate is around 8 percent. So another 6 percent are going back to school and getting their GED or diploma after potentially dropping down. If you notice the chart on the right, that the graduation rate in Lake County has been dropping, but it is just this past school year reached the average for California. So it's still on par with the rest of the state, but has seen a little bit of a decrease recently. Median household income was 37,000 and is projected to rise quite a bit to 42,000 by 2020. If you notice, there was a significant decrease between 2010 and 2015 with the recession and all the effects of that, but the outlook for the next five years is definitely marginally improved from the past five years. As evidence to that, you can see that households earning less than 35,000 a year, so everything on the right, on the left-hand side of this graph are all decreasing, going from 2000, 2015, 2020, and the middle to higher income tiers will be increasing. So that's a good sign. Not just, you know, the 200,000 plus are increasing, but it's a broad increase in the higher income groups and also quite a decrease in the lower income groups. The unemployment rate has seen drastic improvement from, you know, the highs in 2009 and 10. And if you notice, Lake County is becoming a lot closer to the California average. In 2010, Lake County was 51st out of 58 counties, so one of the higher unemployment rates in the state. And currently, they are right around 30, 32, so right in the middle of the pack and nearing the California average unemployment rate. So what that shows is you guys have recovered quite a bit faster than some of the other counties and jumps kind of to the middle of the pack from the lower end. And the unemployment rate in January for Lakeport was 5.3 percent, Clearlake 11.5, and the county as a whole 7.8. This is a breakdown of the industries. Shows it's heavily services-based with strong retail trade and construction. And construction is one that we'll definitely see an increase in the coming years. And overall, this is pretty similar to a lot of the comparable counties, surrounding counties, and some pretty diverse, pretty diverse industry base. And so these are projections from the state Employment Development Department. And so the largest industries poised for the largest growth over the next 10 years, approximately 10 years, are professional and business services, expected to grow over 25 percent. And then construction right behind that, also around 25 percent. And with the recent Valley Fire, that will almost certainly be increased even more with the need for a lot more construction and way more jobs in the construction industry. And I'll just go back one second. You notice the only industry that is not listed here is manufacturing, it's the only one that is projected to decline over the next 10 years. But given some other data that I took a look at from MZ, we have reason to believe that might not be the case. Wineries make up a large, over half of the manufacturing jobs in Lake County. And the lower line are the projected winery growth in Lake County. The upper line is Napa County. And so you see that there's projected to be 16 percent growth from 2015 to 2025. And this growth will, you know, provide a lot more manufacturing jobs, but also bring in tourism, leisure, and hospitality jobs and boost other industries, as we've seen over neighboring Sonoma County and Napa County. The industry brings in a lot of, it can be a strong economic driver, jobs and other The median home price has been increasing. It's still well below the high of 2006, and it was 2,500, sorry, 200,000, 205,000 in 2015. And it's almost half the median home price in California, so the prices are still much lower. It's a lot more affordable than many surrounding counties, as you all know. But the good news for homeowners is the prices are going up, so and the foreclosures have been going down, and so that's good news for people that haven't invested in a home, that prices are coming back. And another trend we see is the real estate market coming back. The number of houses sold dipped very low in 2009, under 300 houses sold in that year, and that's come back all the way up to around 900 for the past couple of years, and remained relatively stable. And so that shows that people are selling their homes once again, and people are being able to purchase homes once again. Another good sign, this data is the recent, most recent we've yet from the state board of equalization. Unfortunately, it's only to 2013, but the taxable sales have been increasing, and it should be projected that those will continue increasing and reach past almost the peak of 2006, 2007. And so that shows that, you know, consumers have, you know, a lot more confidence, they're buying more things, and overall, you're doing, the economy's doing a lot better as those taxable sales go up. Few last charts here. This is consumer spending, and it's pretty on, and pretty much on par with any other surrounding county and the state and nation as a whole. Around 30 percent on housing costs, 15 percent on transportation, and 12 percent on food. Those are the main things that households are spending on, and that is pretty much matching the average. And then just to end, a few upcoming trends that we've been seeing down in Sonoma County, and we think, you know, will move to Lake County if not already here. The sharing economy is becoming huge, everything from Airbnb and vacation rentals to Uber and Lyft. It's really with technology taking off and changing the way a lot of transactions and a lot of economic activities taking place. One thing we've noticed in Sonoma County is the existence of coworking spaces, so a lot of people that don't need an office, maybe they just want a desk to go into and a printer to access three days a week, so they'll rent out for a very cheap price per month, space where a lot of young entrepreneurs and other people can come in, work together, bounce ideas off each other, and don't need, you know, a set office space. And kind of going along with that, just with the increases in technology, seeing the internet a thing where everything is connected together, autonomous cars are on their way, probably, you know, in the next few decades, if not sooner. And then two things that have been very strong in this, in the Northern California region especially, is craft everything and go local, kind of movement towards local food and kind of craft basically everything from wines to beers. Those are the main examples that we see in Sonoma County. But yeah, those are some things that we see upcoming. And that's everything. Welcome to answer any questions, and as I said, you have your copy of the report. So yeah, thanks for having me.
I'd like to come back up. Brian, before I wrap here, there might be a few other questions. I hate to dwell on running media today, because you're not supposed to do that, but I don't know if you have the information on this, but it always amazes me. It always amazes me every time I see reports on the state or on county, you think, well, I'm not going to learn something new, I'm not going to see something that I go, wow, I didn't know that. But it always seems like that's the case. And the unemployment rate for Clearlake kind of surprised me, I didn't think it would be that dramatically different. From the numbers or from the information that you get, do you know, is that, I think I had to say this, is that from people that have grown up in Clearlake, or is it because Clearlake's, Clearlake is a magnet because of maybe availability of housing and the lesser cost of housing that it acts as a magnet?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that I can answer that, I'm not familiar enough with the area. But I would definitely say that it's clear the rest of Lake County has seen a lot more job growth and people getting back into jobs, because the labor force has been increasing, so more people are, it's not like people have stopped looking for work, more people are still looking for work and getting jobs. So I thought I couldn't speak to what exactly would be keeping it hiring in Clearlake.
Okay. It just, anytime I see a number that jumps that big, you know, to all the other numbers, it just kind of keeps my attention, I kind of wonder, you know, what's- It was 11?
It was 11.5 percent, and the county average was 7.8.
So it was, I mean-
Lakeport was 5.
Yeah. But Lakeport has the majority of, you know, county jobs, too, so, I mean, I could see that ours would be, you know, perhaps low, but I just, I was surprised it was that high. I was just curious, I didn't know with a number that different. Does it matter?
Brian, you say that, I know nationwide, cost of food disposal, you know, is about 15 percent, or 12 percent. Do you have a breakout on what part of that is restaurant takeout, fast food, or did you bother to go that deep?
It is not, it's not, the data we have does not break it down that deep, it's just household spending. And I know that there's other categories for entertainment, et cetera, but as far as food, doesn't break down between restaurant or groceries.
Okay. That's it. Brian, thank you very much.
Jim was driving up with Brian today, and they had some really nice brochures for us, and Jim's car ended up getting stuck, so he wasn't able to come, and so Brian was so kind to make copies at the last minute for our brochure. So they do have a really nice product that they put together that we're able to have here tonight. Thanks.
Will we get a copy of that still?
Yes, yes, thank you.
That'd be great. Next up, we have under public presentations, item C, which would be presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Lakeport Finance Department. And Margaret, do you have anything to say on this? You know, one thing I'd like to do is, we have a beautiful award here, but I talked to Dan before the meeting, and I wanted to say a couple of things. I looked up, before this meeting, I looked up a little bit of this, so I just wanted to briefly read something here to you. The GFPA established the Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program in 1984, and it encourages the state and local governments to prepare budget documents to the very highest quality that reflect both guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on the state and local budgeting, and the GFPA's best practices on budgeting, and then to recognize individual excellence and succeed in this goal. Each budget document is submitted to the program, it's evaluated by three different reviewers. To receive the award, the budget document has to rate either proficient or outstanding by at least two of the three reviewers in all four categories, as well as 14 of 27 specific criteria identified as mandatory. I am quite sure from looking at budget documents from other areas and from looking at ours, ours are probably rated a little bit more outstanding than proficient, but I just wanted to give a little background, because this is not just something that is easily handed out, and this is an area sometimes that I was talking to Dan, and I said, this is a crucial, crucial part of the city finance, and presenting it to the public, being able to present it to us, and being able to present it to other departments. And people play his over sometimes when you look at multiple pages of numbers and charts, and I think this is a very outstanding award to be able to present. And Danny, can I give this to you?
And that's what I come, this is the third year in a row, the year, third right now, you see this award, and so, it's a fourth now, okay, fourth, so we're very fortunate to have some of Dan's caliber.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, and like I was telling the mayor when we were talking earlier today, it's very much the team that we're here in this regard, and this is really an acknowledgement of the city and its efforts to put out that information in a way that the community can digest easily and understand, as well as the council and the departments and general staff. So it's really acknowledgement of all the hard work that everyone does in providing budgets. Without Margaret's vision and support in this regard, all the departments willing to do what they need to do to get it out, it's really testament to that's what I'm saying. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Can I say anything?
You know-
I can't. Can you just say one?
The thing that occurs to me is that in leadership roles, we're supposed to be gifted with the ability to be able to manage product and be able to do sales and marketing and be able to do finance, and I was terrified years ago when I had to be able to have this business acumen and be able to understand all of finance. And I think that the CAFRA and all the stuff that Dan does and the charts and graphs makes it really simple for people that are more in sales and marketing, more product. And without that aid and that type of graphic illustration, it would make it really difficult for people that aren't gifted in that particular avenue, and no one is gifted in all three of those areas. And I particularly would like to thank you for making it, you know, such an easy read and something that's easy to understand, and I think it's very important that the citizenry of Lakeport also sees when you do your documentation and measure aye, showing that we're doing the right thing. I think it's very important that we not only have this visibility and transparency and all that stuff, but I think it's important that we show that we do do the right thing with these things, and you do it in such a way that even someone as ignorant about finance as I am can handle it. So I want to personally thank you, Danny. Congratulations.
Okay. Before we move on to council business, I'd like to move up to the chief. The chief would like to have a few moments to do his, part of his miscellaneous reports and introduce a couple of new trainees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the city council and the rest of the city staff and the public, our two new police trainees. As the council's aware, we conducted a extensive recruitment for police trainees back in June and December, actually, is when it started, to try to find some local candidates that we thought would be good police officers here in the city. So we, through that process, these two gentlemen came out on the top. This is Andrew Welter, he's 23 years old, he's a lifelong Lake County resident, currently living up in Hidden Valley area. And this is Dale Hoskins, let me go back to Andrew. Andrew's currently working as a part-time firefighter at South Lake County Fire, down in the Milltown area. And this is Dale Hoskins, he's 24 years old, again, lifelong Lake County resident, living also in the Hidden Valley area. He currently works as an animal control officer for the Lake County Animal Control Department, and prior to that, he was a juvenile probation officer. And so they both, going back to Andrew just for a second, he also worked a couple of years at the Hidden Valley Lake Security Division, and also, also for the San Rosa Junior College Police Department in one of their police training interim programs. So these two gentlemen will, they've completed all processes, they, their job offers have been made final, and they'll be starting work with the City of Lakeport on March 28. And they'll spend a week of orientation here at the police department and also at City Hall, and they will then start the police academy on Monday, April 2nd, and then graduate August 19th. So I wanted to get them introduced to the community and the council and the management and other employees. So with that, I'd like to welcome them to the city and wish them the best of luck in the academy in a couple of weeks.
Actually, if I'll hang on for two seconds, I'm not a big spotlight guy, but I'll tell you, we're at a crucial point in the city right now, and seeing your faces, we're very welcoming.
So what he's saying is you guys are going to have to give a speech.
Andrew, right there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Welcome.
I understand we had a great pool of candidates, they were very good candidates, and so these two rose to the top, so that was really good.
Excellent. Thank you.
They did the good police face when they walked up. Very serious. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to item six, which would be council business. We're going to discuss the solar financing options, the financing option for the procurement of, oh, sorry, we changed the order. We are going to go to Margaret, and we're going to go to Shakespeare of the Park. Thank you. Traditionally approved an event application for the Northern California Shakespeare Festival to take place in Library Park on July 30th, 31st, 2016. Margaret, will you speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. I'm pleased to introduce Mr. John Tomlinson from the Men'sino College Drama Team, or, I'm sorry, my full title. But I'm very excited about the opportunity to have Men'sino College Drama Class working with us at the city to do a Midsummer Night's Dream, July 30th, 31st. I will just, I'll be going to turn it over to John, let him explain a little bit about what the Shakespeare production is.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the city council and staff for seeing me today. Yes, I'm excited. We are, I am an instructor for Men'sino College at the Lake Center Theater Arts. I have been there for a number of years. I have been there for a number of years and have been pushing for a while. It's been a while since we've been able to do a play here through the college. We have a partnership now with Lake County Theater Company and the college. The city is already trying to take an active interest in seeing it happen. We have some support from the Lake County friends, so hopefully some fundraising effort. We're trying to put on Shakespeare at the Lake, the Northern California Shakespeare Festival. And I do have a few documents that maybe can be shared around. Sorry, I only have a handful. And that's really it, you know? We're getting, we're getting a lot of, we've had a lot of meetings and everything and are getting really excited and have had a lot of support and a lot of good reception of the idea at large and looking forward to moving forward with it. Also, so I am with the college. I'm going to be the director. Where do you go? Here he is. Dr. Richard Smith is here with me and will be producing. We also have a design of the stage here. If you guys get a chance to look at that, kind of set with the lovely picture of the lake behind it. We want to do it in Library Park alongside the gazebo, kind of to the south of the gazebo where some of that little grove will get some shade for our audience. And I'll be facing out towards the lake and this lovely scene. So we wanted to bring it to your attention and get any support we can, but just to let you know that we have informal requests and any questions that you have come here.
John, thank you. Sorry, I started to go by you there. I knew I was supposed to move you up and so we could...
Well, sure, appreciate it.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to say you guys are going to have a beautiful backdrop there for having that down there. As being a welfare baby, I didn't have a lot of experience with theater. And when I was able to go back to, back east and visit an uncle and an aunt, we went to a dinner theater, a beautiful place. I don't remember the name of it, but they got to see Hello, Dolly at a dinner theater and it was mesmerizing to me. You would think that movies and TV and all the other things that capture, you know, young adults' attention would overwin, you know, a theater. But it is absolutely mesmerizing when you go for the first time to see a live play or any type of live presentation that is well done. And so I'm glad this is coming.
Thank you. I'm excited on my own level and kind of a similar way because the first play I ever did was Shakespeare outdoor in the park down in Santa Barbara. And to bring that here and hopefully kind of light that torch for others is really exciting to me.
Appreciate you. Any other questions?
If people want more information or they want to get involved, where do they get that or who could they contact?
Send them to me.
Okay.
And I can get you John's contact information.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, please. Absolutely. I like the way that sounds, actually.
Do you have a website or anything that people can...
We're going to get a Facebook page going right away.
Do you know what that'll be called?
Menestino College Presents Shakespeare at the Lake.
Mr. Mayor?
John?
Yes?
One of the things that you try not to ever do, except for Marty, is trying to use humor outdoors because it kind of gets lost, you know, in the outdoors. And doing it inside of a theater with lighting and, you know, advanced audio systems, have you addressed those challenges of trying to get people to be able to hear when you know the boats and the outdoors and birds tweeting and so forth?
Yeah.
It sounds like it might be a special challenge.
It is a challenging environment. We're addressing sound. We shot, we're working with Lake County Theater Company who already has six body packs and microphones that come off the ear and we're hoping to get a couple more. We think we can make it through with a, if anyone in sound and my voice has any, get in the contact stuff or check out the upcoming Facebook page. But yeah, we're, that's definitely a concern. We have the sound system to give you a couple more mics.
Speaking of sound conflicts, has any progress been made regarding the nighttime construction that will be going on?
We'll have to take a look at it and see if we can, if we can work on those dates and make sure that we don't make a lot of interference with that downtown product.
This is actually the 4th of July weekend, so there shouldn't be any going on.
No, it's the 13th of January.
Oh, indeed.
It was Saturday and Sunday, or there be...
Oh, July.
We have a downtown prod jackhammering and some things going on, but we can try to...
Sunday certainly won't be an issue, but and Saturday we'll, we'll make sure that we can work on that conflict.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Jackhammers and Shakespeare.
Already glad I came in.
Any other question?
No.
That's a good catch by Grant Adams, I think, too.
Yeah, John, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to comment that since this production is in the planning stages, a staff is recommending approval for the event with sponsorship from the city and conditional, conditional on working with the staff for final approval because we haven't had a chance to vet it through all the staff going up, items that might come up. And we'd also, they're also asking permission for alcohol sales, which will be necessary as part of the food and beverage sales to be provided by the Lake County Friends of Menestino College. And the funds would be for scholarships for the actors and students there at the college. So anyway, with that, that's, just wanted to give an update on that.
Do we have any other discussion on that? Do we, we have a motion. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. We'll open this up to the public. Are there any other comments on this event or the date? So you got, close up?
I'll make a motion to conditionally approve an event application for the Northern California Shakespeare Festival to take place in Library Park on July 30th and 31st, 2016.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So we have an event? Thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have Dan for a number of items here. But first up is the solar financing options, solar financing option.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, before you, we'd like to discuss financing options for the solar project that we've been working on for some time now. Today's item is just about which of those options the council feels comfortable with staff moving forward on and pairing as far as the entire project itself, which will be presented to council when everything is, is ready for that stage. But we'd like to discuss those with you. Before that, though, I'd like, Mike Adams, our project manager, to give you a brief overview of the project in general, where we are with that and what the schedule looks like moving forward. Mike Adams? Officially working for you.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, I'm Tom. So I was here some time ago. It's been quite a few months and I'm going to give you a brief summary and go over a little bit of what I did previously, just to catch up to date. So, up and down. This is progress report and, and as Jan said, with some options and I believe that he had the recommendation as well. What we've completed already is we reviewed the project, projected utility loads, developed site selection criteria, identified funding options, developed planning schedule and budget, which has now will be, is different because much time has lasted since that was developed, although the budget is close. Invited potentials, investigated potential sites or is using site topos. We did soils analysis preliminary on two sites, two identified sites. And we've been working, meeting with PGE, which regarded different options available. We adopted a planning budget, which we spent a little bit of, but we're pretty frugal. Conducted first phase soils, contracted a sole electrical engineer for a system analysis and design recommendations and we developed system cost and benefit analysis, which I'll go over an update of that with you. We are looking at, at what we feel, I believe, the preferred option is a, is as mentioned and I presented this to you before, but we've done a lot of research on it. Since it's a prepaid power purchase agreement where the system is installed by the, and owned by the investor or by the operator, the system is paid for and purchased at 82% of the cost of the project, which is estimated at $2.9 million now. And 82% of that is $2,378,000. That $2,378,000 is prepaid utility costs over 20 years. So you are prepaying for the power that that system is going to generate. The difference between that and a regular purchase is that you would pay $2.9 million to actually install it and build the facility yourself and then you would realize 100% of the power that's generated to your benefit. With this way, you are basically prepurchasing that. There's a reason that that can be done is that the investor operator has the benefit of taking a 30% tax credit and also depreciating the asset over a five-year period. So there's tax, there's financial benefits that they realize that make it possible for them to offer you that power over 20 years at that reduced rate. The city, 25-year projection for the net savings to the city is $8,122,146.37. But it's not, that's projected. Projection is just a calculation that comes out to the dollar, but I have a feeling it'll be different. The systems, which are the same as I presented to you last time, are 750 KW, which would be an RES BCT system at Highway 175 site. That's directly west of the cemetery. And it's on an ex-sloped area of the spray field area in the sewage treatment plant area. And that system will be credited towards your meters and all your facilities all around town, including your streetlights, the city hall, fire department, lease department, all everything, you know, the public works department. So that, that will be credited towards those, that usage. There's a different calculation for how that works. You don't quite get the same benefit as you do with, if you're hooked up right to the meter, but it's the only way to do it with, you know, every little building needing a whole separate system and that's not a very, kind of way to go. And then the other will be a normal NEM tariff system. It's a net metering and that will be attached at the sewage treatment plant to the main pump station that's right along with the lane there. And it will be credited towards the three meters because they're contiguous and in the same area. Three meters at the sewage treatment plant, which represents about, I believe, about 50% of your power usage is right out of there. Total of the two systems is 1.15 megawatts. This represents what I just explained to you. The funding, we have three options that we looked at. The first option we're showing here is the solar energy agreement is direct purchase to the city. Again, the cost is the same of the project and the net savings, I go right to the bottom line, the net savings in the far right over the 25 years is $7,547,000. There is a electrical bill savings, $293,000 the first year. And for the hand... The next option is the prepaid PPA, which we just discussed. And you'll notice that the net saving is higher, $8,122,000. First year is $293,000. And there's an accumulative benefit shown to the right. It's a little slower because you've put up money to begin with and there's some costs associated with that. Also, this system shows the 10-year buyout. We're probably recommending a five-year buyout and I'll go over that in a minute. And that is that you don't wait for the 20 years to buy the system back. You buy the system at five years and there's a reason that it's beneficial to do that. There's a reason it's not beneficial to do it before that because the investor is taking the five years of depreciation on the system and that's part of the benefit he's able to return, they're able to return to you at a reduced price. And after five years, what happens is the value of the power that you've already purchased keeps going down and you're credited that when you buy it back. And so the buyback is less at five years than it would be at 10 years because you are not credited with as much. It's a little complicated calculation, but it's an interesting idea that you buy it sooner, when it's younger, but you pay less for getting it back, buying the system back. And it has to do with that you already paid for the power and they have to credit you back that power in the purchase. The third is a traditional PPA. Now, this is the traditional PPA, it's pretty common around here now. There's SunPower, SunCity and some of those are out marketing this. This is very lucrative to the investor. It's a 20-year system. They do the same thing where they put a system on your facilities and they sell power to you at an agreed to reduced used rate. So they, you actually have to pay, now you don't have to put any money upfront like you do with the prepaid, but you just get a reduced rate for what the power that you pay and you're paying them. They're still taking the 30% tax credit. They're still getting the depreciation. And then at the end of the 20 years, you have the option to buy the system from them or they remove it from your property. But they own the system, you don't own it. So you're not, all of a sudden you have a 20-year-old system that, and who knows what that assessed value might be? It's a little bit of picking and poking. Many people who are here running things now will be here and somebody else has to live with that decision that was made 20 years ago. So I'd never thought that was good. We looked at that at the college when I was there and put our system in. We chose to purchase it ourselves because we had that bond favor. The site that I previously showed you, does this have a pointer on it, Dan?
Yeah, it should be a little light button that you see. I think it's the bottom one.
Okay. What I showed you before, I think, was a system that filled up this, somewhat filled up this overflow flood check area along Linda Lane. We're proposing the 350 KW system be right to the north side of that flood area, right up against the trees there. And it's on a slight slope. It will be a long, narrow run and it will connect, I showed the connection right there. It will connect to the pump station right here. I forgot to write that in that box. And then down here on Linda Lane, here's the cemetery right here. Here's the current meter. It's a three-phase meter. It has to be changed out to a larger service, to a 440 service. And, and it will have to be run over to this area here. Previously, I showed the system, I believe, up in this area. It's a little bit flatter. We did get some communication from a neighbor there that it would actually have an impact on their view of the city's property and they kind of liked the view of their property. And so, so there's a slope right here that's conducive to being able to bring it down. It is a ground non-unit, so it's down very low on the ground and it'll be out of the site of the area. We moved it a little bit to the east and to the south and that 750 KW system will go there. It does take it a little closer to the power. There is one issue, and that is there is a service road. It's a gravel, just a gravel service road to get to the spray fields and the different pumps there out here. That'll have to be rerouted, so there's a little bit of work. There's some grading work has to be done as a part of the system anyhow. Couple of small trees that have to be taken out and graded so that it's uniform. And so, Quikly will be out there to do that anyhow, and so gravel in the road and replacing an existing gravel service road, doesn't have to be double-wide or anything like that. Been on it many times out there. So that's that. There's a blow-off of that. There's the other one. See, the service road is here, and then, and this is the service road here as well. It lies off right here and goes, supposed to be right over the top of where that service road is. So at the time, we'll probably reroute it up here. It's subject to, got to do a little bit of total work out there to figure out where the best place is. Might need to go up over here, this would be great, because down trees, so it's possible to go down here too. This is just a description of the design. They've been in the ward. The city would manage the construction of it. It has to be the standards of the provider. They have certain standards, because they are responsible for maintaining the system while they own it. So that is one thing. There's three different specific, a payment amount equals approximately 81%. Prepayment is for 20 years, solar power. And the city purchases the system at the fifth annual percy for about 1% to 2% of the system cost, and that's because of the credit. There is some, in, let me go back. The award process, this is pretty standard award process. There's design bid, you know, you design it, put up the bid, you get repetitive bids. Or you do an RFP, you guys have done a number of those for different kinds of things. It's an option available to you for this. But there's also another option under government code 4217.12, and that's to select a provider through whatever process you want to, and negotiate with that provider. I suggest a combination of those, or the RFP. Use an RFP to select a provider, and then you negotiate the provider for the specifics. But the RFP needs to include the system as you want to see it, the size of the system, the type of system, how it's configured, the standards that the provider, that the builder, operator is going to require in terms of serviceability and so forth. They want to have panels that are going to be supported over the 20-year life of the system, not something, not a fly-by-night deal. And so I recommend that request or proposal, which we are already in the process of developing, which could be used for either a bid process or for a RFP process. And this government code, section 4217, allows the city to do that, contrary to public contract law. As long as you make a finding that there's a net savings on energy projects, there's a net savings to the city. That's all. Are there any questions? Dan might want to add some things and get into the other finances.
Thank you.
It's always... Sorry to take us all along again.
I'll tell you what, it's, well, we've taken a while to get to this point. I know there was former council people, and I know there's been a lot of interest in the city and the council to get this moving forward, and good information. I want to ask one quick question before maybe Dan comes back up, or anyone else. Where are we, and you may not know this, where are we on the curve of cities using solar right now? Are we behind, or are we right on the grid? I mean, are most cities, have they already done this?
There, yeah, there's a lot of cities that have done it. Some have, you know, they have a different revenue stream in terms of the ability to make these kinds of decisions. It's a large investment. It's not a small investment, so a smaller city, it's a bigger deal. And I think, we went through this at the college. We chose, it took us time, it took us two years from the time we started talking about it until we actually implemented the project. But I think that being, you know, when you're small, the risks are greater in terms of the impact. So I think that we've tried to be methodical, that's why it's taken time. We've had a couple of different consultants that we've used, electrical consultants. And we talked to a lot of industry people. As recently as yesterday, I had a conversation with one of the potential providers that would have the ongoing providing, and some of the issues that they require, and how we would put that together. So we've already had the council look at a preliminary contract and raise some questions, and that will move forward, you know, kind of methodically as well. So, I don't know, I think for a small city, you're probably doing about what others do. The good thing is you've got land. A lot of them don't. You know, you've got places to put it. So a lot of them have to put it on their roofs. I'm not a favorite, I don't like that idea, putting a utility on your infrastructure. I mean, your roof isn't part of your infrastructure, it has to be maintained. And now you have, your utility is on top of something that requires maintenance. That's, it doesn't make sense. As somebody that's had to deal with maintenance, it doesn't make sense to me. But sometimes, some places, that's all they have. You're lucky enough not to be in that situation.
You do have the benefit of property. The only other thing was, I like the idea of the RFP and, you know, negotiating with a specific provider with a specific plan. David, do you have much experience with that mix? I mean, it sounds like there's a certain amount of legalese that goes into that.
The negotiated contract provisions really allow cities to do those PPAs that Mike was talking about, and we've got other cities that have done that. And, you know, it involves a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of things to be negotiated. Off the top of my head, I don't know why, I don't know anything that would prevent us from doing it.
We just have to specifically know what we want and have the specifications of what it's going to provide to be able to go to the...
I'm in the process of making contact with two of the, one of them is a water district, public water district, that did exactly this PPA program just recently, and Redwood Credit Union just completed one, so it's very recent, from the same company that we've been talking to. So we, I wanted to get some hands-on, what did you run into, you know, how's it working, you know? Were there any surprises? And I'll get that information back to Dan when I get that, it should be in the next week or so.
Do you have any questions?
The only question that I kind of seems obvious to me, not necessarily. When we go through this, you know, the 82%, and we go out there, and I love the fact that these people get this, depreciation over five years, and they get tax credits and all that kind of stuff. And when we do the program ourselves, if we were to buy it outright, those same options aren't available to us in any way, shape, or form. You think that they're...
The city doesn't pay taxes, and they don't, and there's nothing for the depreciation to be putting it. You depreciate it, but it's not a...
Against what, right?
Yeah, there's no benefit to the appreciation other than acknowledgement of the value has gone down. So that's, there's no reason for you to, you don't, you can't take advantage of that benefit.
So it seems that the first option is just a moot point, because there's no way to gain those extra advantages that you would get from savings from some other party that could pass it on to you, because you are that party, and you don't gain it.
Yeah, technically, it's not passing it on to you. Technically, it's deferring the purchase of it to a five-year period, when those benefits have been taken by the owner. And then you purchase it back and are credited what you already paid for, because there's still power to be produced that you already paid for. And that's how it works. So...
Very elegant.
Yeah. The purchasing outright has a net savings to, you know, pretty large, hundreds of thousands of dollars over 25-year savings to the city as well, but this one has more, and there's an option you can take, so why not do it?
Mike, to your knowledge, Lakeport Unified, they went with a full PPA, didn't they?
They did.
Yeah, and that was my concern. To me, it felt like they rushed into it, and that happened relatively quickly for that size of array. And just looking at the potential savings from a full PPA from us, and I don't know what the size of their system is, but to an option number two, it potentially could have been leaving millions of dollars on the table over a 25-year period.
That's right.
And understandable, a school district may not have the ability to invest like maybe we can, but that's always been my concern, is, and we've even had some local residents that have used, you know, the SunPower, and in the beginning, it was great, but some of them run into their true-ups, and it's actually setting them backwards.
So is that basically option three?
Yeah, a full PPA, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's good to be...
No money down.
No, I mean, you know, a local business that may not have the capital means to do something, you know, can negotiate a PPA, but something this large, you really do, we need to be the investor as well in making sure that our taxpayers are receiving the best possible return on their dollar. I don't think a full PPA could do that.
I just want to tell you how it ended up here. I made a presentation about the theater with, to you as an update some time ago, and sitting next to me is a guy in a three-piece suit that made it from Siemens. Who made a presentation to you. I left, but of course, because it was in the paper the next day, I read the article about the meeting, because it might be mentioned, and so I noticed it was Siemens. Well, I had already dealt with Siemens at college five years previously. I knew their deal, you know, and not to denigrate Siemens, it's a great international company, but they're there to take care of Siemens, not necessarily take care of City of Lakeport. And I shared my concerns with Margaret, and she asked me to help you. Now, I'm not sure you got the right guy for this, but I was willing to do it. So you get what you pay for, and you're not paying me much, so, but I'm glad to help you. And I hope I didn't bring you down a bad road, that's all I can say.
I was thrilled when I talked to Mike that day, because we didn't want to look at this for so long, but I didn't want to just hear what the company said, I need somebody that was looking out for the city that already had experience working it, so it's been awesome to have Mike.
I think the pace is going fine, Mike, and the more methodical we are in diligence, really is going to pay off for the...
I really want to be careful, you know, I'm coming in thinking of a recommendation, and Dan and I work together, it's been, and Mark, and it's been fine, you know. It's been great getting to know her, but here too, by the way. It's been a great city.
Mike, both go ahead. I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I'm going to probably steal counsel, remember Turner Slunder on this one. But she brought up at a previous meeting regarding the array that's going to be next to the cemetery, is the location that's proposed now, is with the slope and elevation, is that going to be amicable to the city there?
It's good. Well, there's some grading to make it, optimize it, yeah.
And I was just wondering about the electric bill. How does that change the relationship with PG&E once you have the system?
The bill you get will be smaller.
We get to stick it in the PG&E.
Okay, I get that. But can they change the rules on us later, or, you know?
No, I don't think, I don't think they can change the rules on this. The rates will change. The rates, and there is a projection, or there is a rate increase projection in these numbers. And it's at 4%. The PG&E goes up seven, the average is 7% over the last 10 years, so it's not going down. It's going up, and it's probably going up more than the 4% that's projected. Those savings probably will be greater, we found this at the college. We used the 4% because I wanted to be conservative, and I wanted to know that the savings that we projected, we actually realized. So I asked, when we did these projections, to use a 4% number, because I know the historic inflation rate that there is, which is around 7. So I expect that to continue. They're going to still be building plants that are going to cost more, and your rate will go up to pay for those plants.
So more people that go to solar, they're, I mean, they're just, they're going to have to keep...
Well, they're cutting the programs off, though, you know, they're doing away with the net metering, they're doing away with the tax benefit, they're doing away with the net metering. There's, and some of that is that they're finding that it has, it's having a bottom line impact. So there's probably a balance there in terms of their economics of the power. And they are a public utility, in quasi-public utility, so they have to make their numbers work too. There's a point at which if it doesn't work, then rates go up. They go to the public UC and say, you know, this is what it costs us to do this, and for all these solar projects, we're providing service, but we're not getting the income. Because they still are hooked up to everybody, they're still providing power 24/7. Systems don't make power at night, so, you know, it's, you know, you don't want them to go away either, so that's my... Dan?
Councilman Turner, did Shield Ted steal your...
I have plenty of money.
I do want to thank Mike for the hard work he's been into us. When we originally started this, when Mark took off with this project, Mike, we had one option we were exploring, it was the traditional PPA. Mike did a lot of work when I asked him. We like goalie-like scenarios, so we want to explore options. And Mike went back to the drawing board and worked with our financial advisor, helped us draw two more for your consideration. So what we're really asking for today is which option does the council want us to pursue? I'd like to talk about each of those options as far as the benefits and then the drawbacks as well. And then, like I said, at a later date, after we receive action from council, completed the RFP for the vendor, and have a complete package ready for council, through a council return to ask council if they would like to push the button on it and move forward as a whole. Unless there's hiccups that we can come back to with council with, to the square. So there are three options here. As Mike alluded, the first is just a straight purchase. We go outside financing, buy the placement, follow the bank, and just borrow money and buy the system, and then realize the cost savings from there on out. Option two is a hybrid approach, it's got that prepaid PPA part of it. It allows the owner of the array to capitalize on depreciation and tax credits through the Fed to then, I'm sure that passes all the savings to us, but a good chunk of it. And then we go out and borrow the rest, so it's 82% down, and then they, you don't pay them anything other than the residual, I mean, five years or 10 years, whatever's negotiated, but they are able to give us the system, provide us the system for a lower cost than if we were to do the purchase. And then finally, the option three, the traditional PPA, it's basically just renting power by a reduced rate. And they own the system, whichever vendor selected to build, owns the system. When we compare these three options from a financial perspective, option two for me was the most glaring, because it's the most beneficial to the city and its citizenry. We project a little over 8.1 million over 25 years in savings. Those are checks, as Mike likes to put, checks not written to PG&E. It won't be completely off-grid, at that time and that sort of thing, we still have to use power from PG&E. But over that 25-year period, that's a substantial savings, that's a cash flow savings. If you want to put it in today's dollars, we're talking so far out in the future, it's good to kind of break things open, but what does that mean in today's dollars? It's really almost a $7 million present value savings. So option two for us is the most beneficial, we, the staff looks. Probably followed by option one, and finally, option three. Option two and option one have their challenges as well. Option two, most notably, three funds, the cities that participate in this financing structure, water, sewer, and a general fund. Sewer fund bears the greatest cost as far as electricity. It runs the heaviest equipment, so about 55% of our electrical need is related to sewer and activities. So to run the treatment plant, all the pumping lift stations, that's where that cost is focused. A general fund is next, about 30%, and then finally, water, uses about 50%, or is a handful, about 50% of the... I call about 50% of the overall PG&E share. So each fund has to participate in this structure, and the general fund has some restrictions on how it participates. So we're going to have to figure out, similar to what we did with our CalPERS restructuring, how to collateralize part of that potential debt issues. And then we have to explore that asset mix again and see which options are available to us. Some are on a daily because we can use them to do the PERS restructuring. So that will be a challenge to help us kind of piece together the puzzle as to which we collateralize what's reasonable to make it feel like that work. Same thing would kind of play out in option one as well. The only difference is in option one, as we see it right now, is that once the array is built under option one, the city owns its asset, we can borrow against it. Option two's a little different, as we understand it right now, that we don't own the array until that residual payment happens. Therefore, are we going to be able to use it to collateralize any kind of debt financing? That we have to explore with the board council and figure out if that's going to be a viable option. We think it is right now, and that further supports my, or staff recommendation for option two. And again, these are estimates, so we see that there is a potential for significant savings, and that potential may get larger if the invasion projects of PG&E ramps up their, their rates, as Mike probably thinks they will, but we're being conservative. So there's risks that the saving won't be as great and beyond that, I'm not sure what other risks we might encounter, but everything points to kind of a win-win situation here if the city decides that it wants to pursue this. And this is just the financial side of it, then there's, I don't know what you'd call it, the social or the environment, the conscious side of it, a lot of cities are moving in this direction because of where the state and the nation are as far as energy consumption, saving, being bringing, that's, all those considerations are applied as well. But I wanted to present to you those issues regarding these three options. Then again, the recommendation around is for option two because it has the largest potential for cost savings to the city. Any other questions that I feel I can answer, or Mike, or Mark, or Margaret, about the project, timelines, costs?
So if Mike said that the average increase is 7%, we're factoring in a 4%, which is considerably less, I mean, if you've got a 4% raise and a 7% raise, it's like 75% more, that's a lot. So if you're saying that, and he said it probably wouldn't be $8 million in savings, it would be something different, but it sounds to me like it would, could be significant savings if, you know, if they went up 5, 6, 7%, it would be very significant. So the whole program just seems to be absolutely a, you know, no-brainer as far as doing this and with the needs that we're going to have because of the CalPERS and all the other costs that are going with, you know, compensation packages and things like that. This is something that's almost like we're trying to do a preemptive strike against future cutbacks and services that we might have because we need to save money because eventually we're going to be in trouble, so it just seems like a great way to go, to get money that we can use for other things. And the interesting thing with Siemens was there and then we were at the League Cities and we had put ABM or somebody else had the same kind of a PPA program where they were going to do, you know, most all the work for you and you get, you know, you don't put any money out and all that kind of thing. It's nice that we could do our own proactive program where we can actually get huge savings instead of cutting your savings in half like Marty said with the school.
And that, yeah, there's definitely on the warpath as far as cost cutting, so what you see with the PERS restructuring, this, and then a couple other ideas that Margaret has suggested for, we're definitely going to try and address those future liabilities, try and maintain service levels as best we can, given rising costs elsewhere and needs that are elsewhere, we can cut energy that's certain, so we should start looking at.
I love it. Thank you. Love it. Any other questions?
I'll wait for public to play.
Thank you, Dan. I'll open this up to the public for any comments, how it was discussed up here on the solar. Mike, do you want to come back up? You don't have to come back up, I just.
Don't do it, don't do it.
These are pretty good. Thank you, Mike. I'll bring this back. I didn't know if anyone had any other questions?
No questions. I mean, my comment is that, I mean, this is, this is one of the areas that we as a council of policy can save a substantial amount of money for the, for the taxpayers, you know, and, you know, some of this money, you know, I mean, coming right back into the general fund, especially with our issues with law enforcement and road infrastructure over 25-year period, this could start taking a chunk out of that over time, and that's just one, one area that it can help. So, and plus definitely the feel-good social aspect of it too. Plus I know that the technology behind solar continues to get cheaper and more efficient. So over a period of time, when we get toward the 25 years, there may be, you know, replacement programs already available that, you start swapping out panels, I mean, this could be not perpetual, but, you know, the investment, yeah, the investment could get less and less with technology over time, so, yeah, this is, Mike's done a great job, it's great information, and I'm 100% for it. I too agree with Councilmember Barlett, I like option two.
You sound like you're leaning towards a, a motion.
Well, the one thing, I just, going to the League of Cities, they have these Beacon Awards and I think they have to do with going green and all that kind of stuff, and as I sat up here over the last couple of years, it always occurred to me that anything we can do, you know, the LED lighting and this kind of stuff, I mean, we have so many things on the table, you know, with the new police station, a lot of stuff like that, but I think this is the kind of thing that the public likes to see, this is the kind of thing that we need to do to be environmentally sound, to be proactive and try and do the right thing for the long term. And as far as I'm concerned, having to be in the business owner, you know, there's nothing worse than having a $60,000 PG&E bill that you can do nothing about, but in a situation like this, we can actually be proactive, because something like this, go with the LED lighting, do all these other changes that we're doing, I said, this looks like something, eventually we would be a candidate for like a Beacon Award, where we're doing the right thing and let people see what we do with our transparency and all that kind of stuff, that we're trying to do this stuff to keep the services rolling into the, you know, distant future, so I think it's a great.
Anybody want to follow that?
If there's nothing further, Mr. Mayor, I would move to select financing option number two for the procurement of a solar facility and direct staff negotiate terms with the most suitable financier.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like we're moving. Mike, thank you. Dan, thank you.
I think I have a plan for something that's going to help the city so many years into the future.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
It'll be interesting to say too, you know, 25 years, if that $70 million, you know, was still in there, just back in 25 years, Legos will be here. And be able to say, you know, we, you know, we started it, we collectively as a city started it, and, yeah, definitely.
All right. Good stuff. Good stuff. We'll move on to item number two, which is AB 1600 user fee report, and Dan, I'd like to bring that to you.
Really exciting stuff.
Yes, this is really funny stuff right now.
We're lazy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, it's a regular item that we present to you annually, and that's the AB 1600 report on user fees collected by the city. This is a report required by statute produced annually. It's supposed to be on the website and made available to the public 150 days after this year end. Sure, it would be high right now, but it's largely due because it took me longer than expected to get financials out and even longer to get to this report, so I do apologize for that. This report is supposed to be generated annually and every five years, we're supposed to do a five-year report on, on these fees. We plan to work, find a partner with key development to do a comprehensive review of all city fees. We're only identified three in this report, these are the three that I'm aware of that fall under the requirement of AB 1600. And, but we want to do that comprehensive review of all these to make sure that there isn't something that we're not catching. We've got a lot of fees, a very long fee schedule, we need to do a comprehensive review and make sure that we understand the, the other fees that we collect, that would be subject to this provision. We'll also work with the city attorney to identify what's required of us in that process. So I don't have a lot to say in this regard. The report is attached to the staff report as far as what we collect. We collect three fees that I've identified, water, extension, sewer extension, and then storm, stormwater infrastructure fee, what we call a pervious surface fee. This is for developers who are doing things, I can't correct these if I'm wrong, but if they're building sidewalks or parking lots or even roof structures, I think this is a roof structure, anything that diverts stormwater, there's a 10 cent per square foot of charge to pay for that project. So we deposit it to a special fund that's used to improve stormwater infrastructure throughout the city. So those are the three fees that I've identified, AB 1600 report, and we haven't used a lot of those, those fees last year. We've been pretty active on the stormwater side this year, especially with our sewer project up on North Main, but beyond that, not so much. On the water extension side, we are using those fees to pay for Menaceville College Bank for the water line that we shared cost with running down parallel to service both the campus and that community out there. And this fiscal year, we actually had two new connections to our water line, residents within the city, but that belonged well, since they have approached the city and they wanted to tie in. So we're excited to welcome them to our family, our wonderful, great-name family. Councilmember Barlett has referred to it right now. And then on the sewer side, we continue to collect fees there and we haven't collected much recently, but those are, just like the waters that I mentioned before, enhancing the sewer system to account for additional users and increase capacity. So are there any questions that I feel I can answer regarding these three fees, the report itself, what we plan to do next time?
You go for it, tell her if I see you didn't soon make it, huh?
Maybe next time.
Comes a once-in-a-lifetime. Any questions, Daniel? I don't see any. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone that has any questions on the AB 1600 report or the fees? I don't see any. I will bring it back to council for a possible motion.
Move to adopt the proposed resolution to reaffirm the necessity of AB 1600 development packages.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move it on. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Well, we're just going to keep you up to your own right. Getting a board, covering all the bases here.
He wasn't here last time.
But you missed out on your report, bro. Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport, we're going to adopt the resolution establishing regular meeting dates of the Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport. And Dan, this is you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wearing your, your new hat as the board members for the Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport. I wish, we should have done a contest to name this thing because we were scratching heads, like we have to come up with a name, how do you capture it? Government's it ups with acronyms, anyone? But this is what we came up with.
You mean like bummer? A lot on for the state of color?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're asking you to, to put on your hat as board members of the agency to set your regular meeting dates in conjunction with regular council meetings. And the reason this is important, and it's your first order of business outside of the naming officers and that sort of thing, is that the sole purpose of this agency, this JPA, is to facilitate financing for the city, and we would like to close our USDA water bond deal, and this agency will be involved in that, but it can't do so until its first regularly scheduled meeting, so we're asking that the board set those regular meeting dates in conjunction with regular city council meetings, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Does anyone on the council have any questions on that? Does any members of the public have any questions on us establishing regular meetings or what we're doing? Seeing that, I'll come back to council for a possible motion on setting regular meeting dates.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution establishing regular meeting dates of the Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Any opposed? It looks like we have a new title at the top of the page.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dan. You can rest now. Lastly, we have item C, which is Compliance Officer, Cal Recycle Grant, adopting proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to submit payment requests related to the administration of the beverage container recycling payment program. And, Mark, you live up on.
I don't look like Andrew, but.
No, I'm sorry. You look like you live up on.
Yeah, I'm going to take this for Andrew, Compliance Officer, who put this, did all the footwork and did all the research. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what's before you today is a resolution to allow for the city manager to submit payment requests, or his or her doesn't need, Margaret's doesn't need, related to administration of the beverage container recycling payment program. This, this is a new requirement that they've come out with, is to have this resolution. Each year, we typically get about $5,000 that we typically, typically put towards getting the recycling bins, there should be a picture in the packet, you can see them out here at Library Park, they're the big heavy concrete decorative recycled cans. Now, we typically put them in pairs, where we have a normal garbage bin and then a recycling bin. The grant only goes to the recycling one that has a recycling symbol on there. And we're looking towards replacing as many of those garbage cans that are out there with these types of recycling bins to keep the animals, but it's just cleaner and more aesthetic recycling. But this money can go for other things that are associated to recycling as well. So this is a new requirement that they're putting in place. They may be looking a little closer at, at our activities. And the resolution will, will stay in effect until it's ended, if the council choose to do so. And, oh, yeah, so if there's any questions.
Just a real quick, you said that the containers that you can purchase with this are only the recycling ones, did they have any, is there such an animal as a combination one? You know, I mean, the purpose is to be recycling, but obviously there still is going to be garbage.
I believe they do have a combination one, but what we're looking, they will only cover the portion that is for recycling, so it might get.
And the combo ones for, they're still multiple recycling, they just don't break it down further, but I think I've seen that too, where they still only, you have to show the percentage of the, of the unit that's recyclable.
Any other questions?
Well, it looks like in the picture.
Sorry, these wires are hanging down, down here, if I could touch one.
We're going to have to talk to our technical guy.
It looks to me like these things are, you know, it's hard to get this stuff out, but in the intense, I've been down, there seems to be some, a lot of freelance recycling people that are coming around and they're helping themselves. I mean, are these things something that's like secure, or they allow, you know, can you just tilt the lid and have these guys haul the stuff out, or how does that work?
No, it's, it has a cover so the birds, the ravens primarily, don't get in there and create a mess, but the, the people that like to pick out the recycling, if it's up, if the trash is high enough, they can reach in there and get it, but it's hard to see in there. We have a key to open it up and get in there, pull it out and then remove the recycling materials.
I hate to see us get cheated out of all that recycling money.
Yeah.
I always appreciate entrepreneurs, people that try and make money in the way they can. I think it's great. Yeah, I'll just add.
Actually, I would like what Kenny's experienced, we actually had our garbage and recycle emptied the other week and came back out, and when I looked at the can, there was a brand-new giant, you know, Tully can in there, and I kind of looked and I thought, well, that was nice, you know, they're giving back to us. I've been a tinkerer, so, anyways. Any other questions? Okay, for the public, are there any questions either on this recycling program or what we use money for? Seeing that, I'll come back to council, if suggested motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to submit payment requests related to the administration of the beverage container recycling payment program.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It looks like we're moving on. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Where's Andrew, by the way?
Oh, he had something that came up.
Lastly, we have City Council Communications, this lane's reports. Now, Margaret, I want to, again, I noticed what was, I started, starting with staff, and since you've been, you know, kind of like the attention getter tonight, between kicking your microphone and you've got music going on.
I think I kind of have to.
Still got a little blush there, Mark. Dan, keep it straight.
No report.
Mark, do you have anything?
Just update, with all the rains, we, Pollard's crew have been out keeping the storm drains clear and being prepared. For the most part, we've gotten through it pretty, pretty smooth. Couple trees down, but nothing major. Keeping a close eye on the docks, make sure that they're holding up okay. And we've had to remove some of the docks that are out there just to keep it, because it's so high, it's causing problems with, we're going to cause problems with the ramps, so. But all in all, everything's good. This break is really needed to hopefully let everything come back down. When it's that wet, everything just runs straight into light, so this is a really good break. Hopefully, this next storm won't be so bad and we'll get through it just fine.
Actually, that was going to be my only comment tonight, but I just wanted to say between the couple of big storms that came in, that I think the crew did a great job. I know there's a lot of things that go behind the scenes that people don't see. You know, deployment of this, deployment of that, and making sure this works and stuff. I think you guys did a good job, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to say thanks to Doug, because I called him on Friday and just said, hey, is somebody monitoring just the Third Street gangway? Because it was getting up there. And Doug wasn't aware that it had already been raised, you know, to the, to the extension they had on it. So within 15 minutes, he called me back and said, the guys are going to be down there shortly and we're going to remove it. Because he didn't realize, but I know some of them probably were off on that day because it was on a Friday, but definitely appreciate it because it was coming up so fast that if we would have had bad weather over the weekend, it probably would have bounced it around pretty good, so. It's good that we have that problem right? We're having to remove the gangway because of water supply.
Dan?
Yeah, just briefly, in addition to the gentleman that I introduced that we just hired, the city had another oral panel yesterday. And so we've got another group of candidates that are already trained that we feel is going to be good for us as well.
It looks like we're going to go on there now.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Nothing to report, just that you guys are getting spoiled with 56-page agenda packets.
I was getting. You can always tell when you go to download it, and you go, wow, that came up quick. That's not three or four.
What did we pick on, Dan? Hillary? You sure? Councilwoman Jordan? Marjorie?
The Lakeport Schools had a career fair that staff and who else was there? Councilmember Sheil. I keep getting rave reviews on everyone. Heard from a lot of the kids, they really enjoyed that, so thank you for participating.
My corduroy coat was called metrosexual by one of the students. One of the male students. I was like, wow. Someone was actually paying attention when I spoke. No, no.
Can I follow up on Councilmember Matina?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. We had just got a thank you card today where they sent us actually a summary of the student reviews and everything too. And we, yeah, we got a great rating for what we did over there, so. So it was great that the city had so many staff over there.
Yeah, the kids loved it. Sounds like they were really interested too. So that's, that's a great thing. And it's great for them to find out that we're here, because some of them don't even realize.
Right.
So, great job. Tomorrow's Laffgo, and that's it for me.
Tomorrow is no longer Laffgo for me. I got the information, I get it from John, and I told him, I said, thanks for keeping, for sending me this, I feel like I'm being left out. Yes, I would like to thank Kelly Buendia, the chief, and Mark, and Kevin, and my, for being at the career day, was, Mark and Kevin and I were actually in classroom. So we got kind of the brunt of having to deal with students that maybe aren't as interested in first, but I think Kevin and Mark posed some, some good questions on about what the city did, what it didn't do. We had one class that was, our last pass to the full, and that one actually worked good. We had some kids ask some pretty good questions. But, yeah, it was, I think, a success, and I think Jody from, from the high school would say the same, and we'll look forward to the next one. So we'll be a little better prepared too. We'll have, we'll have some more challenges for the kids, for some of those that kind of get their eyes closing a bit. Not while I was speaking. Tomorrow, the TNT's chamber thing, mixer is going on from Lake County Chamber of Power, so it's at 5:30. I don't know if they're doing ribbon cutting, and I know there's a cost to it, but I think they're doing some kind of celebration, so. Folks are not doing anything, and beyond that, that is all I have other than anti-arrestments next week, right?
Yes.
Yes. Car.
All right. Better not harass me, Kenny.
Councilman Barlet?
Nothing to report.
Other than that, I'd like to just say I am ready for spring. I've had enough rain. I'm ready for sunshine. I'm ready for the beach. And I'm going to pick on anybody that says we need more rain.
We need snow though. More snow in the sears.
Well, a little bit more, but not much more. Other than that, I will adjourn the meeting.